The August 15th Forsyth County Board of Education meeting. First, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Tom, a second by Mike, all in favor, unanimous. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Lindsay, second by Tom.
No, he's asking for what?
Oh, I'm sorry, for personnel land and student educational records.
Oh, so moved.
Okay, a second by Tom, all in favor, unanimous. If I could have everyone's attention, do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Motion by Tom and a second by, who said that?
Mike.
Mike, all in favor, unanimous. You were looking down, so I wasn't sure if it were you or not. Do I have a motion to approve personnel A. 1 through 4, B. 1 through 13, and C. 1 through 5?
So moved.
Motion by Tom and a second by Lindsay, all in favor, unanimous. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to our August 15th meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If we could all rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, first, we have public participation on agenda items. Okay, there's no public participation for agenda items, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Mike and a second by Tom, all in favor, unanimous. And now, presentation and discussion items. First, we have Mr. Hamel with the finance report. At least you're not having to follow awards or anything tonight, right?
We got it easy this time.
I do have it easy tonight. So tonight, we're going to discover, uh, discover, discuss the first month of the new fiscal year 2024, July financial statements. We are still in the process of year-end closing, so the numbers you see are preliminary. They change a little bit as we set up the payables and receivables, closing 30 and going into July. And of course, we always keep goal three in effect when we talk about the financials. So for July 20, 31st, 2023, we began the month with about $133 million in cash, and we ended the month with about $126.9. You can see that cash receipts and payroll are smaller than other parts of the year just because we're not in full session yet with school. And for the teachers, this is the accrual month, so the amount of salaries for this month still has the old pay rate in it compared to the new pay rate, so you won't see that until August. For the year-to-date revenue, we brought in $29 million. We're at a 4.49% collection rate. This time last year, we're at 4.43, so we're slightly ahead of schedule the first month. On the expense side, we spent $50 million year-to-date so far. That's a 9.23% spend rate for the first month. It was 9.20, so we're slightly ahead of that as well. On the cash analysis for debt service, as you can see, the LGP accounts we have set up for debt service has about $10 million in it. We're down to 395 and 394, and the regular account for combined total, which is about $10.8 million. This time last year, we had 44.9. This is part of the decrease because of the millage rate we lowered last year by full mill. A full mill's bringing in about $25, $26 million, so you can see the difference there. And then, of course, we have money that's coming through SPOSS 6 and also the $50 million we had reserved out through the general fund in SPOSS 5 as well. Some of those payments will be transferred in this year as we make payments in February. That's principally the large principal payment, as well as some of the interest. SPOSS 5, we've got $34 million. This time last year, we had 50, and SPOSS 6 is at 40. This time last year, we're at 14. So you can see we're spinning down SPOSS 5, and of course, SPOSS 6 is getting money and coming in strong. We're about a 21% collection rate above what we estimated on SPOSS 6 right now. Special revenue funds, just a little bit expenditures. We're shut down most of the programs in June 30th. They really haven't started up again for the new fiscal year. The federal fund year runs through September 30th, and there's still a bit of activity going on for that. Capital projects, right now, we've got about $28 million on the regular account. This time last year, we had about 30. And school nutrition actually did go down this month because they didn't have any collections. We're at 20.8, and we're at 17.3. With the investment summary, in total, last year, we had about $102 million. As I said, what we're trying to do is maximize the amount of money we put into LGIP funds to gather the most interest as we can. Currently, the general fund's at 54 million. This time last year, we're at 34. We shut down the treasury, old treasury accounts. The Fund 200 is brand-new this year. We set that up, so that money is $10 million. The 353 fund or SPOSS 4 is down to 1.7. We're about 2.2. We have plans to spend the rest of that money out this year, so that fund will be gone. Five Fund is at $34 million. We're at 50 last year. We have plans to spend a large chunk of that money down this year between Lakeside and some other activities. And SPOSS 6, of course, that's a brand-new fund. We had about 14, we're at 60. This is the SPOSS 6 collections from May of last year through July of this year. And as you can see, we started off pretty strong the first eight or nine months. And going back to February, you can see where we had the slowdown dramatically. We had the negative 0.5, positive 0.5, and then we had the two months of continuous drops, and then it came back a little bit, and it's dropped again. So I think that's kind of the signs of seeing the soft landing of the possible recession that's hit nationwide, and I don't think it's affecting us as much, but there is some softening in the economy when it comes to sales. And on the elementary schools, this time last year, we had about 4.1 versus the $4.5 million in any balances. As you can see, the activity for these accounts were that not much in July. High schools usually have the most activity because they have a lot of summer programs going on. For middle schools, this time last year, we had about $1.7 million versus the $1.8. And for the high schools, we had about $5 million versus the $6.3. High schools have done a better job of raising funds this year. And overall, about 12.7. We're slightly, a little bit ahead of that number this year. Percentage-wise, the high schools last year were about 47% versus elementarys being about 38, and that's pretty much where those two numbers flip-flopped. High schools are about the same percentage overall. And that's the financials for July 2023. Any questions?
No questions.
I have one question there. So in spite of having several months, year-over-year, negative on the SPOSS 6, we're still 21% overall ahead on collections?
So when we put together the projections, predictions, basically estimates, we use historical data, and then we applied a growth factor that, that data over the 60 months in the SPOSS 5 collections. And we put a pretty big number on that projection. We were, I want to say, 10, 12, 15% projections increase on some of the numbers. Well, with that being said, how we came up $300 million that way, we're still ahead 20% on top of that number. So that just shows you how strong the economy has been during the pandemic and post-pandemic. But recently, the actual collections are still 20% ahead, but the actual collections month-to-month comparison are softened or have come down a little bit as of the last five months. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Next, we have the Midway Elementary update with Daphne Rogers. Can't wait to hear this.
This is one of our debt-free schools.
Yes. There's another bonus. That's good. Can you hear me okay? Okay, very good. Well, first of all, good evening, and I'm very excited to be able to be here and share an overview, a brief overview about the new school. And I feel like we're in such a unique position because we are taking an existing school and moving into a new facility. First, I want to thank the board. I want to thank several of the district departments, Carol Daniel Construction, LPB Architects, and the citizens of Forsyth County for making this new Midway a reality for us. We're so appreciative, and we really appreciate the hard work that they are putting forth in this new building. Much progress has taken place, as you can see on the screen. We had our groundbreaking October 18th of last year, and we just celebrated the beam signing on July 18th, marking the halfway point for construction. We got to take our first tour that day, and that was very exciting for us. This building is going to actually allow us to almost double occupancy. The current building, we're able to house approximately 625 students, will be just under 1,200 in the new building. The current school has served the students and families in the Midway community for over 61 years, but we have some strong core values and beliefs that we're going to take forward into the new facility. We take great pride in the strong relationships that we build with our students. It's those relationships that are the foundation for their academic success. You can see on our slide our vision and mission, but I'd like to point out our hashtag #OneMidway that truly conveys the sense of family that we have created at Midway Elementary and will continue doing so. We are a leader-in-me school, much like several of the other elementary schools that may be impacted with this new redistricting process, so that could provide some continuity for some of our new families. We focus on Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. We learn about, we model, and we apply those habits in our everyday life at Midway. It's these habits that really support the connections we make with our students and our staff. And those habits directly relate back to the academic work we do with our students. If you'll see on the screen, there are several bullets here, and many of them align to components in our leader profile. And we feel like our leader-in-me way of life truly allows students to thrive. I did want to just touch base on a couple of ways that the leader-in-me has really impacted Midway. You'll see our student leaders pictured here. In just three years, the last three years, we have grown from 10 student leaders to almost 70. And that just shows the power of empowering and providing opportunities for students to take ownership in our school. They've grown from greeting and touring special guests each day, each time we have somebody come in to visit, to mentoring some of our youngest Mustangs with reading and math skills and games. We've had students sit on and participate in our teacher interviews this last year. And right now, we are currently working with some students to write and produce a podcast, so we're looking forward to that. All of our Mustangs take a leadership role because they set goals, academic goals personally. They partner with their teachers and their parents to create a plan, and they then monitor and report on progress throughout the year in our student-led conferences.
It's an older student right there in that middle picture.
Yeah, we noticed that.
Thanks for pointing that out.
At Midway, we strive to provide relevant academic experiences for our students. We most definitely want to build solid foundational skills. We want to encourage problem-solving, and we also promote critical thinking. And you can see on the screen, we offer a variety of opportunities for our students to engage and extend their learning. I do want to highlight, too, on this particular slide, this is our first year participating in PBIS. It's a planning year for us, and it's really perfect timing because next year, as we move into that new building, we'll begin that implementation phase. Something else that we're working on is working to be a STEM-certified school. So as we move into the new building, we'll also have the partnership with Denmark next door, so we're looking forward to growing science, technology, engineering, and math. Our new facility is going to provide space both inside and outside, and that's going to allow us to expand some of our student and parent opportunities. The larger parking lot, of course, will allow us to welcome visitors, but it's also going to help with our more safe, efficient car line flow and get more people off that main road, so that will help the community. It will also, we're looking forward to that new electronic marquee. In the new building, we haven't gotten that yet, which I appreciate the fiscal responsibility. We're going to have that moving forward, but that's going to allow us to provide ongoing communication to the community at large. In addition, we want to enhance our community connections, and I think proximity is going to be a huge part of that, being right next door to Denmark High School. We'll be able to invest in partnerships with their CTE programs, like the Teaching as a Pathway. We've been able to host some of those students in the past, but we feel like we can even strengthen that much more being right next door. We also look forward to partnering with them in their science and engineering and technology pathway components as well. The new Denmark library is going to be almost in our backyard, so that will help us to foster further literacy connections with our families. And then, we also take pride in some of the partnerships that we have created with many of the businesses, the local businesses, like Solvay. They've provided a lot of resources and field trips, hands-on experiences to extend learning for our students. And some of the nonprofits, like For Kids and Cure Childhood Cancer, are ways that we're teaching our students to give back to the community and make a difference. The Midway community truly has a rich legacy that has been built by the families in that area since the early or late 1800s, I should say. The current Midway, the new Midway facility, is going to be situated near the previous 1880 structure, and it notes some of the prominent families that used that as a residence and a medical practice. And we want to continue to honor their legacy going forward. We'll do that by including them in our grand opening and our time capsule ceremonies, but more importantly, we'll be displaying pictures and a plaque in their honor in our new media center. So we'll have a daily reminder of the rich history in our Midway community. On a personal note, while I did not grow up in Forsyth County or really live in the Midway area, and so much later, as a child, I was actually a patient of Dr. Denmark's. So I take a sense of tremendous pride in serving the Denmark community today and really commit to honoring her legacy along with the other families mentioned here. We feel very fortunate to move forward, and we look forward to the new possibilities for our future Mustangs. On the screen, you are going to get, you are getting the first glimpse of our new updated Midway Mustang logo, thanks to the collaboration with Forsyth County Communication, Forsyth County Schools Communication Department. We are unveiling it for you today. You also know that we're moving from a late start to an early start school, and we really feel that that's going to provide safety for both our Midway and our Denmark students. We also really feel like that's going to give an opportunity for our Midway students to participate in after-school activities, both at school, in the community, and really provide some more quality time in the evening with their families. We look forward to forging a bright future ahead in this new building, and we truly are red carpet-ready for welcoming our new families, and we will ensure that they are safe, connected,
All righty. Thank you very much. Okay, next, for action items, we have Mitch Young with the redistricting timeline.
Well, now that we've seen the plans for this school, we've got to have a plan to populate it. So that's what I'm here for. That's a positive way to talk about redistricting right there. So we really are very excited about this redistricting, and I would just, just add on to Daphne's presentation, having been at two schools in this county, at high schools, Lambert and Central, where you have an elementary virtually on your campus or next door, it really does add to, to the whole sense of community that you have there. And you're going to, you and your families are going to love it, Daphne, excited. So we had last week, is that back? Yeah, there it is. We presented the timeline last week that we would like to do redistricting. The only adjustment that, that we would, we would suggest that we make to this, after much discussion and debate, and Jennifer Caracciolo being right and me being wrong, we're going to go ahead and, and look to move the September 20th public forum from Forsyth Central High School's auditorium to West Forsyth. We'll work out the logistics on that, but if the schools affected that we project are going to be affected are the ones in fact that are affected, it makes more sense to shift over a little bit closer to that part of the county where more, more of those folks affected will be. So that would be the only change to the timeline that, that I would suggest that we make, which is, again, moving, moving the September 20th meeting at Central to West Forsyth High School. Beyond that, we're pretty committed to this timeline, if you're willing to approve it. So at this time, I would recommend that Dr. Bearden, get the proposed timeline for the 24, 25 of redistricting, go to the board for approval.
Recommend approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
By Lindsay and a second by Tom, all in favor, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Points of information, Dr. Bearden, do you have anything?
Yes, please, three if I may. We are, just finished our eighth day of school, as you know. I want to applaud Mr. Satterfield's here tonight, but him and the transportation team. We started the school year about 60 bus drivers short, which has caused a lot of adjustments in terms of routes and things like that. And additionally, we have about 1,000 new students in our school system. Mr. Satterfield has a number of new bus drivers, and so we had to change some routes. And then on top of that, he dealt with some pretty severe storms, both in the morning and afternoon at dismissal, but things are running very efficiently now after only eight days. And again, really want to thank Mike and his entire team. They've done a great job of getting, getting our kids to and from school safely. And as Mike always reminds our community, and it's worth stating, we always put safety over speed. So again, Mike, thank you for your, your leadership in the Transportation Department. Also want to, what's that?
I said the other mic.
Oh, the other mic. I also want to thank Matt Work. Matt is here tonight. The maintenance staff, custodial staff, did a wonderful job this summer getting our schools prepared. They also dealt with a very serious storm, as you remember, a couple of weeks ago that caused some significant damage throughout the school system, but all those things were taken care of, other than the North Forsyth High School football field, but that's in the process of being taken care of right now. So again, to our custodial and maintenance team and Matt and your leadership, thank you for getting schools ready to go as they were eight days ago. And then finally, again, we have about 500 more students than we anticipate at having to start the school year, so we've had to make some adjustments in terms of staffing. Other than the transportation of folks, all of other staffing positions are in really good shape. As of last count, I think Mr. Hershey said we had about 10 openings, 11 openings for certified staff. You know, we have over 4,000 in our district. Compare that to some of our metro partners, we are in really good shape in terms of staffing. And we have about 54,500 kids as we start the school year, and registration, they're still coming, as they often do, right through Labor Day. So we'll continue to monitor that and keep you posted on enrollment, but we're off to a very good start. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to take a short recess, and if anybody needs to go, are you welcome to stay for the public participation of non-agenda items, which will be next. Thanks. If I can have everyone's attention, I call the meeting back to order, and we will have our public participation on non-agenda items. First up is Jerre Rochelle.
Thank you. My name is Jerre Rochelle. I don't believe in God, but I love the people I go to church with every Sunday. I can't understand being attracted to a man, but I love and appreciate my gay friends and family, not to mention my wife. I regularly challenge myself to connect with people I disagree with about the fundamental nature of the universe, but sadly, it's been very difficult to find the grace and space from the woke left to make these kinds of connections. Here's what would be nice to hear from our woke friends. Jerre, you're right, some content is too explicit for some children, but it's deeply important to us to have the historically marginalized given some attention, so that the future isn't filled with same injustices as the past. We'd love to work together and find books that we can both agree on, so that you get the controls over explicit materials and we get to support the kids who might not form. Maybe such an expectation embraces too much. Perhaps the people pushing explicit materials to children are afraid of showing vulnerability, or maybe their hearts are so filled with resentment that they cannot believe their opponents are engaging in good faith. I'm still genuinely interested in understanding and reaching across the divide, and my monthly invitation of a free lunch has no expiration date, but I also understand that if people feel like they are on the side of righteousness and a war worth fighting, it's easy to dehumanize the people you disagree with, to keep your rage burning powerfully against any self-introspection. And on this, they're right. This is a culture war being waged. I mean, I'm not saying that the head of the American Library Association is a Marxist lesbian fighting for communist solidarity, but the head of the American Library Association says she is a Marxist lesbian fighting for communist solidarity. The long march of the left through our institutions has happened in the shadows for decades, and while we may have argued that the changes have been small or the impact has been minimal, it's hard to continue doing so when leading presidential candidates get indicted by rogue Fulton County DAs for disagreeing with the woke narrative on election integrity. As corrupt as the Richmond, north of Richmond are, our fight ends up somewhere closer to home, even closer than we think. It's not just our local school board that becomes an arena for a cultural battle, it's each one of our individual souls. It's having the willingness to have uncomfortable discussions with people you disagree with. It's taking a leap of faith and forgiving someone for baking swastika gingerbread. It's about talking with each other instead of past each other, about the problems of the past and the promises of the future. It's about moving from our culture war to a culture peace, no matter how delicate that peace may be. And so to promote this kind of woke conservative reconciliation, I'd like to ask the board to support and institute parental involvement from all political sides of the aisle in the process of adding new books to our libraries. We have focused so much on getting individual explicit books out of the hands of children, we've lost track on building consensus about the books we can agree should be in the hands of our children. I believe that if we can work together when choosing which books actually get into our schools, we can fight a whole lot less about getting inappropriate books out of our schools and maybe, just maybe, build some peace. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time, and again, I'd love to have lunches, anyone who disagrees with me.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Renee Claire Kovacs.
Hey, guys, happy eighth day of school. I have a request for you, and when I thought about making it, I was like, but they already do this. But it came to me that you need to do it more. I want you guys to go to the high schools and work with the kids there, and I ask this because I was talking to a senior at Forsyth Central, and they expressed to me that they're very frustrated because the esports team is all but disseminated. The coach for the team has gone to another school, and the equipment for the team has been disseminated through the school. He is upset about that because the students themselves help contribute to getting those computers, and if you have kids who game, you know those computers are not cheap. So I feel a sense of, yeah, you guys should be heard. And so what do I do? I tell them, come see you guys. And at that point, the light goes out of his eyes because you guys are elected representatives, and you're big people, and standing up here is very nerve-wracking and scary. and you're big people, and standing up here is very nerve-wracking and scary. That's why I have my list. So I encourage them to do that, or him to do that. And I thought about it, he's a senior, he's a future voter. You guys are in an elected position. These students need to know how to be constituents, not just that you vote every four years and then sit back and take what's given to you. There are Y Clubs, there's MOC Government, great places to go talk to these kids. They have civics classes, and I've heard lots of conversation about how our young future voters need to learn how to be engaged in the process. Go to a civics class, go have lunch with them. It's not that disgusting pizza that's baked on a sheet and you have to put five napkins on top of it to get the grease off of it. Under Mitch's watch, Forsyth Central upgraded their cafe, and it's pretty good, I guess. So please, go be with these kids, let them see that you guys are people, that you're approachable, and encourage them to vote, encourage them to be constituents and have a great school year.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Vedant Patel. You can correct me with your pronunciation of your name.
Vedant Patel.
Vedant, okay.
Thank you, board, for your time. My name is Vedant Patel, and I'm a sophomore at Denmark High School. Today, I'm here to discuss a prevalent issue that we have been mishandling for years. Drug use continues to skyrocket throughout our high schools despite anti-drug programs like JAMPS and DARE. In fact, the aforementioned programs actually backfired and caused more students to engage in drug use. A study from the University of Illinois concluded that the DARE program was counterproductive, and students who participated in the DARE program were more likely to engage in drug use. Another study was conducted with over 1,000 students who received a DARE education in sixth grade, and it pointed to a bleak future once again. All overdose-related deaths have increased by fivefold since 1999. So it's time we acknowledge that PSAs, scare tactics, or just say no to drugs is not an effective method for prevention. While they do have good intentions, and they did shed light on an issue that is often hidden under the rug, tough love programs are never going to undo years' worth of trauma and mental health issues. Out of the 19.3 million American men and women with substance use disorder, 9.5 million, or nearly 50% of them, have some sort of mental health issue. This study was conducted by the National Survey on Drug Use and Health in 2019. So what are the alternatives? What are some possible fixes? Well, we need to provide accessible and anonymous support groups to students who are struggling with mental health issues, because we need to tackle the root of the drug epidemic, which is the lack of support students receive when they're going through a mental health issue. Individuals struggling with anxiety, loneliness, or depression may turn to substances to alleviate the emotional pain and distress that they receive. But if we have someone that understands them and supports them along the way, then it'll be significantly less likely for them to turn to drugs. Instead of school hallways littered with posters about the effects of vaping on the lungs or cocaine on the brain, we need posters that encourage students to seek out help and encourage students to know that they aren't alone in this struggle. If our schools had after-school programs where students could interact with like-minded individuals and trusted professionals, they would have a chance to break free from the chains of addiction. Remember that every five and a half minutes, someone dies in the United States of a preventable drug overdose. The clock is ticking, but the solution lies in our hands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and last, we have James Limming.
Hi, I'm James Limming, and in May, I graduated from Denmark High School. In two weeks, I'll be moving into the dorms for my first year of college. I've been in Forsyth School since kindergarten, so 13 years, and with any luck, this will be my last time ever standing up here and speaking. I just wanted to thank you guys for everything you've done for me, for the lessons that you've taught me. Thank you for teaching me that it's not only an option, but a necessity to use the public libraries rather than the one at school. Even though the one at my school was more convenient, I mean, I was literally taking a class in it every day, I wouldn't be able to trust that books about people like me would actually be there. It'd just be easier to drive to the nearest public one. Thank you for teaching me about the importance of community, because I for sure wouldn't feel safe at one of these meetings without one. The only reason I felt that I could stand up here the last two years was because I knew I had people backing me up and because an adult would be stupid to do anything to a minor at these meetings. I can only hope that people can find the kind of community that I've managed to find. Thank you for teaching me that not all adults are safe to confide in, especially not the assistant principal, Mark Karen, in ninth grade, who, when presented with the fact that I was being harassed for being trans, told me, a 13-year-old, that there was nothing he would do for me because not everybody agrees in my lifestyle. In case you missed it, I said nothing he would do, not nothing he could do. He chose to do nothing about it because of who I am. Thank you for teaching me how to scrape by, to do just enough to get a college credit. From eighth to 11th grade, I probably missed at least 200 school days because I was too scared or too depressed to be at school. But I still stand here, graduated, going to a good college. Thank you for teaching me how to use my voice. You know, a lot of people tell me I must be so brave for speaking up here, but it's actually really easy. It's really low stakes, especially once I realize that you guys would rather listen to parents of private school children than your own students. It's much better practice than standing in front of a mirror with just as much insignificance. And finally, thank you for teaching me just how vital it is for me to get out of this hopeless county and this hopeless state. I can't wait to attend a school that actually cares about the well-being of all of the students instead of just the opinions of a few parents. It's actually kind of funny, I haven't even started college orientation, and my school is already doing more to ensure the inclusion than any of your schools have done in the past 13 years. Members of the board, I have one last message for you. Do better. Good night.
Thank you. Okay.
Second.
Motion by Lindsay, second by Wes, all in favor. Unanimous.